District in the Bosch Frelick Room. Today is Monday, March 17th. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes, additions to the agenda?
I have none.
What are the wishes of the board?
I would move that we approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No questions. Ms. Remini, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Public communication. Anybody in the audience wishing to talk anything on the agenda? Anybody in the audience? Anybody in the audience? Head shaking, no. So, next item, administrator's report. North Dakota Secondary Principal of the Year, Mark Andreessen.
Yeah, I'd like to have Mr. Andreessen to step up. He was recognized by his peers as the North Dakota Secondary Principal of the Year. It's a great honor, especially when your peers vote that for you. And just wanted Mark to come here and say a few words and...
Okay, well, thank you for having me this evening. You know, it is truly an honor to represent a community. I was asked 21 years ago to, or given the opportunity 21 years ago, to come to Mandan Public Schools and be the principal of an absolutely wonderful district. And I had one goal in mind, and that was to make Mandan a better place than when I first came to Mandan High School. And I hope I've made steps in that direction to make those things come true. I know the new building has had a huge bearing of this year, which is an absolutely wonderful place. And we really haven't really scratched the surface on that yet of its capabilities. We're just trying to finish the whole building up. It's been a wonderful year with our kids. My award this evening, you know, the recognition of that, I thank all of you guys for the opportunity to represent the Mandan Public School System, the Mandan School Community. But this is really about the kids and it's about our staff. This is not about me. It never has been about me. This is about all the staff and the wonderful job that they do, serving our community, serving our students, making them capable of doing what they can do as they graduate with diplomas during their time at Mandan High School. It's about the students doing what they're supposed to and taking care of business and getting and pursuing their education and getting their ultimate goal, which is that diploma, as they walk out the doors. In the 21 years that I've had as administrator, I've had the opportunity to watch 25, probably about roughly 4,500 kids actually receive a diploma. That I've actually had the opportunity to hand majority of them too. That's where I get my success. What I look at is watching those kids walk through our doors and walking out and have a success as they move out of Mandan Public Schools. So, but that's what really this is about. I thank you again for having me here this evening and I hope to continue to make Mandan High School a better place as I continue on my career as principal of Mandan High School.
And I just want to say that I know Dr. Rederaf and I really appreciate working with Mr. Andreessen and his team at the high school. They've been great to work with. Anytime we have a challenge or we work together, we get through it. And I just think Mark does a great job and he's very deserving of this recognition. I too would like to say thank you to Mr. Andreessen. Thank you for you and your team, what you do. And thank you personally for all the extra work that you've done opening up this new school. This has been a long, busy, busy summer and busy school year for you, I'm sure. So, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Andreessen. Next up, we got Cognia's school accreditation update. Carly or Dr. Rederaf?
Yeah, thank you. Just to kind of reiterate, thank you to Mark for all he does. He's definitely somebody as a newer administrator myself, that his leadership I've learned a lot from and trust his counsel a lot. So, shifting gears, every five years, now it'll hopefully be seven, we have to go through an accreditation process as a school district. It's through a group called Cognia. That's what the state provides us for this process. If you've been around a while, you may have remembered in the past, they would bring whole teams out to buildings and look and interview people and talk through it. Now, since COVID, it's really gone to a pretty online format, virtual format. You have an extremely long and detailed Cognia report in your board packet. Have no fear, I'm not going through all of that tonight. We're just going to hit kind of the 30,000-foot view of it. And if you have questions, please don't hesitate. The Cognia report was put together primarily by Mr. Just, myself and Dr. Betts, along with feedback from teachers and administrators in appropriate areas. And they really looked at four key characteristics. Culture of learning, leadership of learning, engagement of learning and growth in learning. And this year, our visit was done totally virtually. So, just to give you a little bit of context, culture of learning looks at the healthy culture of learners, parents, educators. Do they feel connected? Do they feel purposeful in their work and in their institution? And does that align with what we say our values and our norms are? And so, for us, we got a 3.5. It's a four-point scale. We got a 3.5. Their average is 3.2. Our strengths in this area was our MTSS support systems for all students. That's our intervention systems, really strong for us. And really a collaborative decision-making process through really how we leverage our PLCs. That PLC time in our district is really a valuable, valuable thing that we've cultivated. Suggestions for growth, it's just some fidelity pieces, like anything. Those processes look a little different in every building and some of that's good. How we approach something in one building maybe needs to look a little different. But there are some ways where we could have some protocols just to make sure that those processes are a little more uniformed. As we move into leadership for learning, as it sounds, it's key to any good institution is that we need good leaders supporting the learning process, teachers, and having that positive impact. We got a 3.3. Cognia average is 3.1. Our data review processes, both at the building and the district level, were a big strength for us. We have really strong data. Dr. Just is going to share some of that in the next presentation, but we do a really good job of looking at that. Our emergency management protocols and on those pieces that also go into the standard are well done. They feel like that's a strong point for us. Where we could grow is just how do we get stakeholder impact in a little more of a systematic way for some of our decision-making processes when appropriate? We talked a lot about how do we meaningfully get student feedback? And how do we meaningfully engage parents? We have pockets, but just how do we maybe systemize that a little more was an area of growth for us. Engagement for learning, it's what it sounds like. Are our students engaged and invested in what they're learning? We were 3.3. Cognia average is 3.1. We are committed to a standards-based approach in teaching and learning. They identified that as a strength. And we have a robust system of learning supports. That's everywhere from our family liaisons. We have virtual school opportunities. We have alternative school opportunities. One way we could get a little stronger in this area is implement a process to look at data a little more longitudinally to address some trends. And then finally, growth in learning. How do we impact a learner throughout their entire journey? Are they engaged and ready to be transitioned in their learning to the next stage in life? This, we gave ourselves a three here. The network average is a 2.8. They like our Marzano instructional evaluation models. And our community partnerships was a big strength for us. All of the, our cultural advocates, our partnerships with juvenile services, our outside supports for clinical counseling, all of those pieces were a big strength. Ongoing support would be just continuing our professional learning and focus on some of those individual learners and individual teacher skill sets. How can we really get more personalized in both our professional development and our student learning? So, with that, our two biggest areas of growth is, does, is that me making that noise? All right. I'm not sure if it is, but design and implement a system-wide process for quality learner-centered classrooms. So, we really want to continue to look at our instructional model, our learning design labs. And what they're really talking about here is how can we personalize learning for kids? That we can meet them where we're at, we can engage them. And really looking to expand that MTSS and that intervention process at our secondary schools. It's a little bit of a harder beast for us just because of class periods and how that looks. It can't look like it does at the elementary, but I think there's some different things we could do there. So, really looking at approaching that a bit differently. And then standard 28, really focused on that career development skills and promoting lifelong learning and success after graduation. Us opening Heart River Career and Technical Education Center was a big step in this. We have a work-based learning coordinator for the first time ever, that that's her whole dedicated job. And so, continuing to develop those pathways and continuing to really, I feel like we're just at the tip of the iceberg with the potential there of continuing to grow those things. So, our overall score was a 2.93. That puts us, we're very solid average, almost to that above. So, we're doing good work. We're obviously like anything, we have areas we want to grow in. The areas that they identified that we have some growth in were areas that we had already pre-identified as a group that we agree with and know that those are places that we want to focus. So, with that, I know that was very fast compared to the full report that you have in your packet, but just trying to kind of give a 30,000-foot view. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Rederaf?
Thank you.
Next up, we have academic achievement data. Dr. Perry Just, welcome Perry.
Good evening. We, along the lines of Cognia, we, we've been looking at different ways as we roll into a new statewide assessment coming up about how we can look at our data in comparison, because we're going to lose all that longitudinal data with a new state assessment coming. And so, one of the things that we want to share tonight is we kind of thought a good way moving forward as a part of the strategic plan is how do we compare to our counterparts across the state? And so, what I want to show you is how we, how we compare with the 10 largest school districts in the state. And so, that's what the graphs that I'm going to show you tonight kind of, kind of reveal for us. Organized by elementary, middle and high school levels. And then how do we look in comparison to the top, top 10 school districts, largest 10 school districts? For some context, you know, the largest 10 school districts in the state make up about 67% of all the school, all the students in North Dakota. And so, this is a vast majority, if you think about it, of the students that are in North Dakota at the same time. And it's the big systems, if you, if you think about that. Saying that, at the elementary level, we rank in, in, in English Language Arts on the state assessment. That's grades three through five, number two in the state. For some context, two, three years ago, in 2022, which would have been just a year removed from COVID, I was here a couple of months ago talking about that. We, we ranked eighth. So, we've made some great strides, especially in elementary, ELA. In math, at the elementary level, we're, we currently rank third. 2022, we ranked fifth. And so, that kind of points to a lot of great growth that we've had at the elementary level. In middle school, this last year in ELA, we ranked fourth. In 2022, we ranked last. And so, our middle school, and we've talked about that, last year, our middle school went through the TSI process. And they've made some great gains in that area, moving from 10th to fourth in the matter of three years. In math, we actually ranked third in 2022. We currently rank fifth. It's interesting because that trend line for math at the middle school level kind of looks like a big squiggly. We were up last year, down this year, the year before we were down, the year before we were up. And so, I think that's an area we know we have some work to do and, and are working on that right now as we go along. We did a lot of training last year and so, we're implementing some new things. A new class that you guys will be, will be in front even of the year is, in, in, probably the next board meeting, we'll be at our next student achievement meeting, trying to make some changes at that level of things there. At the high school level, in ELA, we ranked eighth this time around out of 10. Three years ago, when Mandan High School, Mandan High School was on TSI three years ago, they ranked last as well. So, we've made some gains there. We're actually last year up to sixth. I think, not to make excuses, but I think a little bit of all that preparation for getting ready for a new building might have played a role in that. In math, oh, the other thing I was going to bring up, at high school, it's important to note that two schools among the 10 largest schools used the North Dakota State Assessment for 10th grader and eight schools used the ACT. This coming year, everybody at, at, at the high school level will take the North Dakota A+ Assessment, which we've talked about in, in this meetings, in grade 10 for next year. But that's why you see that split between the two grades. In math, we, we are in the sixth, which is, which is good, considering again, three years ago, we ranked last. So, the high school under, we previously talked about Mr. Andreessen's good work at the high school, moved from, from 10th all the way up to sixth in that area. I think we really focused in on math three years ago when, when we're in any TSA and I think that's starting to bear some fruit now, to be honest with you. I also wouldn't want to leave this meeting, one of the things and, and Mark touched on it perfectly. Hey, thanks for setting me up. Where the Mandan High School over the last six to eight years has really focused a lot on graduation rate, because that used to be an area where we, of growth for us. This last year, we were number one in graduation rate amongst all 10 of the largest school districts in the state with 85%. So, that, that is where the focus has been and so, that's an area that we've done really well. Looking at some of our academics, I think these are areas we could grow in moving forward. With that, any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Just? Information is very, it's, it's nice to see that we are making improvements on, on some of these, so.
For sure.
Questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have the Essentia Health Grant Application. Dr. Rederaf?
Yes, I will share this here on the screen, maybe. Pull up here. There we go. So, this is kind of a twofold thing. I just want to share a little bit with the school board on, as you know, we started Mandan Little Learners about four years ago with Janet Basingway as part of the CLSD grant, the, the big literacy grant we had. There was an early childhood component to that. And one of the big things that they, Perry and Janet really, and Vonda Doll focused in on was a community-based approach to our early childhood is how do we meet families and caregivers with their kids in the community to build some skills, understanding that those caregivers are the first and most important teachers for our kiddos and wanting to have a community approach to it? Well, it has exploded in popularity. The first Spark events at the, at the library, who has been a fabulous partner to us. And think of Spark as like Storytime and steroids. You come in, you have a story, but then there's different centers where caregivers are able to play with the kids and interact with them. The first ones had maybe five kids at them. I had my daughter at a few of the early ones. She's had one since then with 60-plus kids and 40-plus caregivers. So, really exploding out of the space that the library can provide, which it's been a double-edged sword. They've been a great partner, but we've had the limit programming and they also have programming they want to do just because of space constraints. Well, this kind of coincided this year with Essentia approached, Dr. Betts and myself, about just looking to partner in some way with Mandan Public Schools. And one of their big focuses is early childhood. So, that's where this grant application kind of came out of, is we've seen from our test scores and our, for their incoming kindergarteners, that we are, we've grown 10 points over the last four years with their incoming MAP scores. That's before we've done a lot with them. So, that really is a testament that we have kindergartners coming in more equipped than we ever have and wanting to continue that. And so, that's where this Play Lab idea came out of. So, as you remember, the old, I'm going to get to the right slide here. Ferris Field, let's see if I can rotate this, probably can't. But the old Ferris Field locker rooms are still there. We use them currently as our print shop. These, this is currently all softball and baseball fields now in here. We currently use this as our shipping and receiving. Well, now that the Brave Center is no longer used for high school classes with the new high school, our goal is to move our print shop and our shipping and receiving back up to the Brave Center, which would leave that building empty. It's still in very good shape. It's not that old of a building. Now, the warehouse across the street that has the big red X in it is also ours. That needs to come down. That's, we have water in the light fixtures. It's pretty not salvageable. And so, what our idea is with this grant is to use the money, tear down this warehouse, put in a parking lot there and renovate this space to be like a Play Lab, so that we can run our early childhood programming out of it. One of the big pieces of Mandan Early Learners that has been transformative is the Early Learning Coalition. You'll see that in your packet. It's, I think, 15-plus groups now that have come together. They meet once a month to collaborate and they've done a lot of joint programming. Our hope is that the Early Learning Coalition can do pieces of work there. And if, this brown spot right here to the south of, of the Play Lab space is actually owned by Parks and Rec. And I just spoke to the park board last week. And part of this grant is potentially putting in a splash pad there that Parks and Rec could operate and own. That would be part of our learning lab when we wanted it to be, but also would be just for general public use. This location is one block from Head Start. It's three blocks from Mary Stark. We feel like it's in an ideal location for us to access families and, and, and kids who could really utilize this. The library has also come on board with it. They would do a satellite library down there. So, that, they really have, it seems crazy, but they really have a hard time engaging families that are on that side of the railroad tracks to get up to the library. And so, we could create a satellite library down there and one end of it would have books, but it would also kind of function like the bookmobile. I could request a book. They would bring it down for me. We can do resume things. So, it could just really be an awesome community resource. And so, the budget in here is big. We're asking for big things. Right now, I'm just kind of letting you know that we're working on this as an FYI. It's something that we're hoping to get done. It serves us well. We need to get that warehouse down. We need to do that work anyways. It's a building we have that we'd like to find a good use for and we've seen firsthand the importance of this early childhood programming. And I think it's a way to do it in a really community-focused way. So, with that, again, I know there's lots of information in this proposal. It is just a proposal. I actually meet with Essentia tomorrow on our next steps about where they're at with, and we have contingency plans depending on how much they're willing to come to the table with. But I wanted to share with you kind of this vision and if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Dr. Rederaf, when I read through this, I just, my heart was so happy. Like, it's just such a wonderful convergence of such important things. And with Dr. Just talking about our test scores and we know how important early child is to future success. And just all these coming together, I think are wonderful. I had two questions. One, I know there was a tentative timeline on there and I understand there's so many unknowns.
Yes.
Do you, we shouldn't really pay attention to that at this point.
Right. I needed to put a timeline in there to meet the grant specifications, but it's, that's the world according to Carly and that's about it, so.
It did seem pretty quick. I mean, I loved it.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And then, I guess the other is if there's, I don't know if there's anything you need from the school board from a support perspective, but I just, this idea is really, it's just really wonderful and so many community partners and so much need.
I appreciate that. I think one of the powerful things is reading it. I included the letters of support in there. If you have some time to look at those, I think it's really powerful. I, I don't want to belabor the point, but I have to share a really cool story. We have a family who's new to the country here. Dad's a doctor. Little guy was turning one. They don't really know anybody yet, but they've been coming to Spark. And that's really become kind of a community, especially for the adults. So, mom was talking about, can we bring cupcakes for his birthday? Because we don't really have friends for a birthday party, that sort of thing. They can, they turned Spark into his birthday party. Like, the book was about birthday. All the stations were about birthday-themed things, made birthday cards. They had like, this kid had 40 kids at his birthday party. And just the power of community that that creates beyond just the literacy and, and the positive interactions, I think really speaks to why this is important. So, yep. Any other questions? I will keep you updated on it, for sure.
It's an exciting use of the buildings that we've got that are kind of needing to be something else, so, yeah.
And I should add to it, one of our talks with Parks and Rec too is about how can we be collaborative? We know they're short on space too, whether it's Mac programming and possible, can we share some staffing? Somebody runs the Play Lab for us part of the day and maybe helps them with Mac and other places, other parts of the day. So, they're really interested in being collaborative that way. And they have some potential grants that if we're able to help them get off the ground with the splash pad that they could maybe apply for. So, you think a new generations park like up in Besmark where we could have a playground, a splash pad and maybe some sort of shelter? I think that would be the ideal, but it's just brick by brick. Hopefully, we can put something together.
And if I could, Mr. President, I just look, I have a son who's played baseball for a number of years and we've been down at the baseball field. There's hundreds of kids down there every night in the summer. I just think that this being right down there would be such a good partnership.
Question is, any consultation at all with the city?
We haven't yet. They're aware that we're applying for it. We wanted to kind of see what we ended up with grant money first and kind of, you know, are we serious about this splash pad or not? Or is it just going to be kind of a school building depending on where we get with it? And then that is our kind of next conversation, because they own the space right next to that as well and how can we work collaboratively there?
All right. Next up, we have legislative update. Dr. Betts?
Yeah, we'll continue with the fun stuff. I, again, I just typed this up and I gave you a little report. First one, school funding. House Bill 1369 was heard in Senate Ed this morning. It left the House of Representatives before crossover and they put it down to 2% increase in the per pupil payment each year. You know, we're advocating for four and four. Right now, if the legislature appropriates money every biennium, with the money they appropriated for K-12 education, Adam Tesher, who does the estimates for them, always overestimates students. And I understand why he does that. They don't want to fall short on revenue. With the money that they will turn back at the, at the end of this biennium that they won't use if they use that money, and then also the money from the Common Schools Trust Fund. And the Common Schools Trust Fund, if you remember when in our country, when they first started setting it up and plotting land, they put everything into townships and they put one section in each township that was reserved for the school. And I think they were thinking that there would be a school built on that section. Well, North Dakota still has those, and the revenue from those, that land goes to the Common Schools Trust Fund. That's a lot of oil wells. It's also a lot of the speeding tickets people get goes into that Common Schools Trust Fund. It is billions of dollars right now. And right now, it funds almost a quarter of the per pupil payment. The $11,000 that we get per, comes from that Common Schools Trust Fund and that's growing every year. That, that increase grows every year. The legislature appropriation from the general fund has actually been going down. And if they took the increase, kept their percentage the same, took the increase in the Common Schools Trust Fund and the turnback money, they'd have enough for a four and four. And that's our argument. We need to get it to four and four. I'm not sure we're going to get it, but we're going to keep trying. Our argument too is their employees, state employees are going to get 3% and 3%. How is it that our employees are going to get 2% and 2%? So, we're trying to make that argument. My hope is that that's going to happen. I understand they always start low and it's always easier to add money than to pull it away. But we're hoping we can get to four and four, or at minimum, three and three. I'll just keep going if that's okay, Mr. President. School meals, nothing new to report. Right now, as it sits, when it left the House of Representative, they, currently they fund 200%. If you're 200% at poverty level, you get free meals. They've increased that to 225%. 200% right now is a family of four making $64,000. So, it's not a lot of money. My hope is that they can increase that. I don't know that everybody, I'd love to see everybody get free meals. That'd be easy for us to administer and be great, but at least raise that from 225% to 3, 400% would be nice. Property tax, three bills. They just heard the governor's property tax relief bill was heard this morning, was given a due pass recommendation. They're passing them all and I think it's going to go to conference committee and they're going to have to figure out, I think it's going to be a combination of primary residents. think it's gonna be a combination of primary residents, a school meal buydown. As you know, with our per pupil payment, we have to levy sixty meals, and the state kicks in the rest to get us to the eleven thousand dollars per pupil. Right now, in Senator Lousers' bill, which is eleven sixty-eight, it would, we'd have to levy thirty meals, and they'd kick in the rest. So it would be a thirty meals of property tax relief. So I think that is a decent chance. There's some momentum behind that. We probably won't know that until mid-April, what direction they're going to go. And finally, education savings accounts. There's two remaining bills. One was heard in Senate Ed today. The other will be heard in House Ed tomorrow. My personal feeling is, I think it's gonna be Senate Bill twenty-four hundred that gets passed, or is gonna have more legs behind it. I don't have any problem with education savings accounts. I don't have any problem with private schools getting public dollars. I mean, right now, they do participate in the school lunch program. They do participate in our federal title programs, but they follow the same rules as we do when they do it. And my hope is that if they do pass, the same rules are gonna apply to all of us. I do think it's gonna change a lot from the version it's in, if it does pass, and we'll just have to see where that ends up. And I can answer questions on any of these, or any other, or I could try to answer questions, I guess.
I have a couple of questions. The one with the school funding, did they give a reason why they are decreasing the percentage?
I think, right now, they did a, they have a revenue projection that comes in. They heard it last week, and it was a little less than they think. And then there's other priorities. There's a lot of competing interest in the legislature. Every group comes in with a different idea, and you can only spend each dollar once. They keep saying that money going to private schools isn't gonna take it away from the public schools, but if you spend a dollar here, you can't spend it over there. It's all coming from the same general fund.
And then, can you just break down the two bills for the education savings account? What each one was different?
Yeah, well, I believe they'll change, but right now, fifteen forty, which was heard today in Senate Ed, would appropriate roughly four thousand dollars for every student who went to private school to use for tuition. It's about that simple. I think, what was the fiscal note on it? It was?
Forty-eight million or something like that?
Yeah, maybe a little less than that. I think they toned it down. And then the second one, the educational savings account bill that Senator Axeman did, it is, I believe, was a five hundred dollars right now for every student in public school, every student in private school. And parents could use that for tuition. They could use it for a hot lunch. They could use it for band instruments, sports fees, a lot of different things. But then there was a second section of that, that if you went to private schools, there was extra money for you. So I think it's kind of, we'll give you some over here, if you let us take some over here. And there'll be changes to both bills if, before they're approved.
Dr. Bits, what was the change in the revenue forecast? Do you know off the top of your head?
I don't. I know it was slightly less than they were expecting. They were hoping for a little bit of an increase. It was still an increase, but it was less than they were expecting. I don't think it was significantly less, but it was less. I can get that for you, Mr. Wolf.
No problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks. Thank you, Dr. Bits. Next up, we have the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have review and consider approval of the previous board minutes, March third, two thousand twenty-five. Review and consider approval of the February two thousand twenty-five bills. Review and consider approval of the February two thousand twenty-five revenue expenditures. What are the wishes?
I'd move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions? Ms. Remini, please call roll.
First.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We have nothing under unfinished business. Under new business, we have review and consider approval of the first reading and following policies. GAA personal goals, GAAA, equal employment, educational opportunities, GAD, staff development, GAE, complaints and grievances, GAF, nepotism, GAG, staff conflict of interest, GHD, sexual offenders on school property, GIA, solicitations by staff members, GAK, personal records, GAL, electronic communication with students, ILA-r-one, acceptable use of technology, electronic communication with students, and GBM, personnel transfers. Dr. Ritterath?
Yes, we can, there's not super substantial changes to any of these policies. You can see through them, just kind of briefly touching on them. Personnel goals, eliminating that first paragraph, but not real big changes after that. And I can answer any questions that anybody has on any of these. Equal employment and educational opportunities, just made some wording a little more consistent in it across the different sections. When we're looking at staff development, really minor changes. Same with complaints and grievances, minor changes. Nepotism, we didn't have any changes, too. Staff conflict of interest, just got rid of that first paragraph as it wasn't needed, but no substantive changes there. Sexual offenders on school property, again, minor changes to that one. Solicitation of staff, by staff members, no changes to personnel records, no changes to electronic communications with students, some minor changes to that, mainly kind of updating a few of the references. No changes to the acceptable use policy, and then real minor changes to the personnel transfer. What that personnel transfer changes, just so you know, is we made an internal option on Town Ed this year for internal transfers, is hopefully a better way for us to give teachers an opportunity to put out there. My daughter's gonna go to Roosevelt Elementary next year. If I was currently teaching at Fort Lincoln, I could say, I could put an internal transfer in there and just say, Carly Ritterath would like to transfer to Roosevelt. Here are the grades. I'm interested in teaching. So that if they did have an opening at Roosevelt, they would least be aware of any internal interest in those schools. So that's why we changed that policy, is we just started that this year to hopefully give teachers some opportunities if they're interested in those sorts of transfers. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions regarding the policies, those changes? Any and none. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move that we approve the first reading of said minutes, or not minutes, of those following, of those policies.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of the policies. Ms. Remini, please call roll.
First.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next up, review and consider approval of the first reading to delete the following policies. GAH, staff community relations. Dr. Ritterath?
Yeah, and we just felt that this one was redundant. We have a lot of these opportunities outlined in other policies and other areas in our communication plan and other things, so we didn't feel that it was necessary to have it in policy.
Any questions? What are the wishes?
I'll move to delete that policy.
We have a motion, several seconds, delete the policy. Ms. Remini, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, review and consider approval of certified contract for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Correct. Mr. Andreessen and his team are recommending that we hire Vanessa Peach to, for the vacant position we have in special ed at the high school. This is just a replacement for retirement that we had. It's our, we would ask you to approve a contract for Vanessa and welcome her to Mandan Public Schools.
I just have one question. I know in the past, that's been a really hard position to fill, and I think we've filled a couple in the past two meetings. Is it, is that, is that pool getting larger? I was just curious, because it's, I know we, those were empty at times, and we've had different struggles with that.
I think there's several different special ed openings. This is an LD, if I'm right, yep. And so sometimes the ID and the ED get a little bit harder to fill. But I think they had, I don't know how many were in the pool. Six were in the pool? Seven were in the pool? Six?
I would say this is also an area that's really benefited from some of the para-to-teacher programs that the state has done, just in general, as far as getting more teachers in the area, because often those paras who are working with our special education students are the ones that choose to go back to get their teaching, at least in our little realm of experience. So I think that's helped a bit as well.
That's, that's great news to hear. Thank you.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move that we approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six contract for Vanessa Peach.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Vanessa Peach. Ms. Remini, please call roll.
First.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, review and consider approval of certified letter of resignation. We've got Jamie Winstrom, interventionist, Mandan Middle School, Janet Bassingway, CLSD extended contract, and Vonda Doll, CLSD extended contract. So there are two different types, it looks like.
Jamie Winstrom is retiring from Mandan Middle School. She's been with us for a number of years, and want to thank her for her service and ask you to accept her letter of resignation. And then Mrs. Bassiwaite and Ms., or Dr. Doll, both have extended contracts through the CLSD grant. That grant is going away. We will no longer have that for next year. So it would be our, we asked them to resign this portion of their contract, and they, they have done so.
One question I got with Janet's, there's, she notes there, continued conversation regarding how the scope of work might emerge for regular teaching contract. Is that?
Yeah, I think anytime, anytime somebody's working less, she just said she wants to continue to talk about what are her priorities, what are her duties. She's our early learning coordinator, does a fantastic job, but anytime you're working less, there's, yeah, we have to, we'll have to prioritize what we ask her to do.
Okay, okay. All right. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move to accept those letters, letters of resignation, and thank them for the time.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve its letter of resignation. Ms. Remini, please call roll.
First.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next up, review and consider approval of open enrollment application, seeking a deadline waiver. I think we all should have that in front of us.
Correct. And this is a Mandan middle school student whose family had moved out of the district and have any good experience at Mandan Middle School and would like to continue. And it would be our recommendation that you approve this application, seeking a deadline waiver. Oh, two of them?
Yep. Oh, there's two, yep.
Yep, on the backside. Yep.
Motion and a second to approve the open application for open enrollment. Ms. Remini, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up, we got future meeting dates. March eighteenth, tomorrow, administrative negotiations, three forty-five, Brave Center. March eighteenth, teacher negotiations, four fifteen, the Brave Center. March twenty-fourth, student achievement, five o'clock, Brave Center. March twenty-fifth, insurance committee, four o'clock, Brave Center. April seventh, regular school board meeting, five thirty at City Hall. April twenty-first, regular school board meeting, five thirty at City Hall. Any other meetings we're missing? All right. Seeing nothing else, motion, the meeting is adjourned.